And there's no laughing. I see people laughing. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of the North Hampton School Committee on November 13th, 2008. I'll ask Mr. Race to call the roll, please.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Newman.
Sandra Grant.
Dr. Glady, Lorraine Bell. Ms. Hartrey?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
Ms. Knell?
Here.
Ms. Minnick?
Here.
Ms. Pick?
Here.
Mr. DeHaskell?
Present.
Mayor Higgins?
Present. And Mr. Casey is here. Okay. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to the school committee at this time? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Linda Tiley, and I've been before you lots of times in the past. I live in North Hampton. Often, I'm here to tell you what I think you should do. Sometimes, I'm here to tell you what I think you shouldn't do. Tonight, I come bearing gifts. We are not to steal your thunder, Paul, but the high school is, at this very moment, lifting the curtain on a Midsummer Night's Dream, and I have complimentary tickets for each of you for the program. They are, they say Saturday night; they don't mean Saturday night. They have blue stars on them, which trump the Saturday night. Feel free to come to Friday, Saturday, or Sunday's performance. I understand that you're busy tonight.
So these are all-access passes?
All-access. We got key passes. And if there aren't, if I counted wrong, I have a couple more in my pocket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another man.
Hi, I'm Sarah Haugen, and I live on Elizabeth Street in Northampton. And I didn't come very prepared, just kind of came because I'm really concerned about the Bridge Street School closing, and it's a major concern to me and many people in the neighborhood who want to walk our children to school and not have to bus them places that are further out. There's a tight-knit neighborhood there. We have a lot of young families who have just moved in with kids. My daughter's almost four, so she's not at Bridge Street, but that's where we're planning to go. We bought a two-family house, 30-year mortgage, and not going anywhere. And there are so many people in our neighborhood who have children who are five and under who are there to go to Bridge Street School. And I couldn't bring them all tonight because they're putting their kids to bed. So I'm here speaking on their behalf and hoping that you'll see, you know, see a way to make sure it stays open for the next 20 years or more, I hope. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Barbara Eck. I live on Union Street in Northampton, and just to echo what Sarah just said, we moved there to put my three-year-old daughter in a, in a school that I could walk her to. And, and it's been quite of a disappointment. You know, our backyard sort of meets the parking lot there, and I would, would hate to see it not be the lovely active place that I see every day and the kids that are here playing. And I'd like to see my daughter there someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thanks, thanks, everybody, for speaking. Next is the, any announcements from the school committee? Okay. The Senate recommended actions, the approval of the minutes in the school committee meeting on October 16th, the vice-pronounced committee meeting on October 14th, and the committee subcommittee beginning October 23rd.
The approval of the law?
The second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. There's some children who are sitting in the front row here very quietly, and they're not laughing. And I think they're here to present to us. And this is our elementary school reporters from the Jackson Street School, so welcome. They're going to introduce themselves, and I did put in one of our reports that we're thanking you for letting us come back to be able to share our news with a viewing audience this time than last time. But I'm going to let Ann Marie say that whole thing. But we'll begin with our JFK report.
Hi, I'm Marcus. JFK School Committee Report. The big news at JFK this month is our school-wide read. Everyone in the building, all students and staff, just finished reading "The Misfits", which is a book about four middle schoolers who feel like they don't really belong. Sticks and stones may break our bones, but names will break our spirit. This is their slogan. When they decide to run together in the student council elections, they start their own party, the No Name Party, and their platform is to stop name-calling at their school. Today, students met in multi-grade groups to discuss their reaction to the, to the book, and tomorrow, every group will create a bulletin board that reflects their discussion. The next time you're at JFK, please look for these. Do you know, do you want to know if the No Name Party triumphs? You'll have to read the book yourself, or you could ask anyone at JFK.
Hi, my name is Kyle with the Leeds School News website. The Leeds website continues to grow, and the community is welcome to check out this resource for school and this information about Leeds School. Our generous parent, Anne Marie Monagio, volunteers to update this PTO website to keep us informed. Our goal is to develop the website to provide information, updates, and forms and flyers as the year progresses. This is a way to also move to reduce reliance on paper.
I'm Ella, and this is community meeting. This morning, Thursday, November 13th, was our fourth community meeting in Leeds Cafeteria. Several families were in attendance. Second graders shared an animated version of the seasonal song, "Over the River and Through the Woods." They used bells and danced in their dramatic re- 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 pre- 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 First graders sang Albuquerque Turkey with props to invade their appreciation audience. Miss Valamansky and fifth graders' helpers offered ideas and in the message sent. Another, another favorite, Chicken and Fish Superbreads. We look forward to seeing you at our next community meeting on December.
My name is Emma, and I'm making a thought bond to this month. If you have time, we have a job for you. We are wishing for parents that are starting volunteers to help out during their lunchtime recess time. We may come in and judge once a month or once a week. We may give an hour here or an hour there. You could really use extra hands and smiling faces and occasionally a red leader too. Lunch begins at 11:15 each day and goes until 1:20. This contact leads office of this is in chessboard.
Hi, I'm Anhao, and this is?
Destiny.
And we are from Jackson Street School News. First of all, thanks to everyone for letting us come back for another meeting. We appreciate being able to read all of the school news for our TV viewing audience. At Jackson Street, we participate in the National Student Mock Election. This was hailed a few days before the reelection for president. Many students were very informed about the presidential election and had very, very strong opinions about the candidates. We all, we all took it very seriously and voted privately. The results were McCain, 19; Obama, 226; McCain, 0; Barr, 1; Nadar, 1; Nadar, 1; and Baldwin, 1.
Today, we participated in a mixed-up day out lunch nationwide event. This is sponsored by Southern Poverty Law Center's Teaching Tolerance Project. It's simple. Whoever chose to sit next to someone, they don't usually sit next to. Miss Agnew gave us a mixed-up sticker to wear for the rest of the day. Kids sat next to kids from different grades. For some kids, they never had that before. It's not an easy thing to do, but we think it's a good idea to try. Have you ever tried mixing it up at your work places? That's our challenge.
Who'll give you this paper also?
Hi, my name is Nana, and this is the Bridge Street News. Besides being very busy learning, the students have been enjoying some special events. The PTO Book Fair was a big success, generating a lot of money from field trips and providing some wonderful books for students in better classroom libraries. The Green Team has gotten off to a great start. We have three big goals that we are working on. One, recycling and trash reduction. Two, reducing paper generated by the school office. And three, splooshing up the playground. Last Friday was our first no-trash day in the cafeteria, and it was a big success. All the students cooperated to see how little trash we could have at home. We are also planning to recreate the playground using the spray. There is a turkey raffle underway to fund our nature's classroom trip in the spring. You can buy a ticket for $1 to win Thanksgiving turkey or donate it to the food bank. There's also a food drive underway for this survival. Joe Salins provided a very lively drumming performance in workshop last month. It was very loud, but a big hit with the kid. The anti-bullying program starts next week. There will be a film and a four-week discussion series at each grade level and a parent information night. Stay tuned for details.
Hi, my name is Leah, and I have news from my new school. Hispanic heritage fiesta. Over 150 family members in French language bar third in Hispanic heritage fiesta October 23rd. Parents of our students prepared delicious food for us to sample. Edgar Hansel, a neighbor and friend of mine, provided music for dancing and fun. An artist who creates traditional paper mache masks and in his displayed his craft. Young and old enjoyed the festivities that recognized the Hispanic heritage of many of our school families. Nature's Classroom. All our fifth, fifth grade students are enjoying the weekend nature's classroom at Beckett Universal this week because of the effective fundraising of our parents and generous donations from the Northampton Education Foundation and other in the community. The students are able to participate in this outdoor learning experience with minimal cost to family. We appreciate our there officer, Allison Art, growing along as a shepherdess he does at many of the, at many of the schools. Students from Leeds School and Hilltown Charter School are at Beckett this week, too. A new major trail, a new major trail. Thanks to the efforts of Brendan O'Leary and Eagle Scout who attended our school, we now have a newly created major trail in the woods behind our school. Teachers decided the trail would take our Hitchcock Center educator and Brendan gathered a crew and completed the work class. The trail offers access for our younger students to a variety of habits and rock structures and allows nature exploration free from the poison ivy that also inhabits our woods. The project encompasses our Northampton Environmental Education Classic that has been funded through NEI.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll probably be able to see it on TV some other time. This will be on TV, correct?
Yes.
Channel 15.
Was that live?
Jen was live, right? It's going live to tape though.
Great job.
Okay. Top that.
Well, there's actually not too much to report from the high school. One thing, though, is the tardy policy has been getting pretty strict up there. I, for one, am feeling the squeeze. But I'm dealing with it, you know. We're just, there's a big pileup in the office every morning. So, I mean, the administration's changing around, but we'll get used to them eventually. But recently, actually, today was the first day, few, five tardies. We got notified last week. We now stay after for an hour in addition to having to make those tardies. So things are probably going to change pretty soon up at the high school. But that's really it. Boys' cross-country meet at the state championship, so congratulations to them. Yeah, we're running this Saturday. Things are running pretty smooth besides that.
Okay, we need a vote to request census information for the early childhood programs. Far of life isn't here, but I think we do this every year. We know what to do, so somebody want to move to request the census information?
So moved?
For a second. Second by this pick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Next is the food service report, and this morrow is here. I saw her in the back.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Last year, we served over 207,000 meals. This was a decrease from the year before, I think partly because the census for the schools decreased. We did, however, bring in $14,000 more than we did the year before. Our reimbursements from the government remain pretty much the same as it was the year before. Our expenses decreased by just under $9,000. Part of the decrease was we bought no new equipment and just repaired what we had. Overall, our program is still running in the black. You can see the comparison at the bottom of the page, how in April of 2001, we were $118,000 in the hole and being supplemented by the city of Northampton. Now, we have a positive balance of $27,000. Some of our expenses, besides food supplies and labor, our software and our service contract for our point-of-sale computers runs about $8,500 a year. Our repairs were just over $6,000, and then we have to do things like clean grease traps and the hood vents, and that was almost $45,000. So a total of $19,000, $4,500, I'm sorry. The total was $19,613. The new scan card system now is in all the schools with Ryan Road coming online in October of '07. It's running relatively good. We still have issues with parents not paying the bills. So if parents could understand that this is like a debit system, and they need the money in there for the children to be able to pay for their meals out of it, if there was some system they could set up in their homes so that they know when to replenish it, send in X amount of dollars every week, so that's been the only big problem, is having to send out letters for parents who are delinquent. The free and reduced applications are up again this year, and this is partly because it was made mandatory. They went home the first day of school. The teachers checked them off when they came back, and these are used for the basis for busing. Those students that are free and reduced get free busing. We continue to offer the salad bar at the high school this year. We only averaged about 32 meals a day. The start of this school year, we needed to eliminate the salad bar due to losses. Some of the improvements we made with the wellness policy, we've gone to low-fat, low-calorie frozen products. Ice cream has been eliminated in three of the elementary schools. Only one elementary school now is currently selling it. We do offer water and milk for a la carte sales. We've eliminated white bread. We only offer wheat bread. And we continue to offer more whole-grain products, pastas, and brown rice instead of white rice. The free and reduced applications for this year, we ended up with 597 free out of 27 '08, 149 reduced, for a total of 746 students free or reduced. And that's approximately 28% of the students qualify for either free or reduced. We need to increase the price of our meals and milk as of September 2008 because of escalating cost of food and supplies. Milk alone increased 40% in one year. Canned goods went anywhere from $1 to $10 a cakes. Fresh produce, many items went out of sight. We are finding that from the government, the commodity foods are getting very little meat anymore or very little cheese, so that we're needing to buy at market price. Any questions or?
I do have a question. What do you mean water is to be available for purchase?
We, we sell bottled water for any of the students that want to buy bottled water.
No, but there is other, is there tap water available?
There's tap water available, and they're welcome to, there's bubblers, and they're welcome to have that.
Good. Because this thing of a bottle of water, are, you know, now that we have this new water filtration system, the water here is wonderful. Complete waste of money.
Pictures and cups would be nice.
Do they not have pictures and cups?
Not at all.
No pictures and cups?
No.
Well, I think we should have pictures and cups.
Ms. Minnick?
I'm just curious, you, you were talking about the ending balances in the account, and I'm curious, for the last several years, it's actually declined, and I understand why that happens, but I'm curious to know whether you think that, I mean, at the rate it's been declining, it looks like you could be in the red at the end of this year if something weren't different. I'm wondering if you think that closing the salad bar will, will hedge against a good portion of that, and if there's, if there are other things that you see that will make a change this year so that you don't end up falling below?
With the elimination of the salad bar, we should save quite a bit of money. I think it ended up costing us over $40,000 last year. So, and that's almost the difference between last year and this year.
Yeah, okay. So that would lead.
Mr. Flynn, oh, do you want to answer?
I just wanted to add to that. The, you know, we'll be making budget of property awareness and, and the full school committee. There's significant capital needs in the, in the kitchens that we have been trying to address when the surplus was high. Now that we're in a position where the surplus isn't as high each year, we haven't been able to address that. We have a broken dishwasher right now at Jackson Street School. We had just gone to going from using disposable trays to using the trays, using the washer, the dishwasher, and it's now broken. And that's a $14,000 to $15,000 replacement cost. So we have, we have really old equipment. Carol and I actually were spending some time talking about this last week, so we have some really serious needs in, in the cafeterias. Unfortunately, the, as the balance drops, we have less to work with, so.
With a capital expenditure like that, is it reasonable? I, I think in the past, we have asked the food service budget to handle maintenance, ongoing maintenance, but I mean, is it fair to ask for capital improvements to come out of this budget when it, when it's clear that their expenses are rising and it's so close?
I, I think the, the needs of the cafeteria are just going to be added to the list along with the buildings and, you know. But it does have, you know, there are parents at Jackson Street that suddenly see us using the disposable trays again, and so it's good for us to at least get the word out there. The reason is, we have a broken piece of equipment, and at the budget and property committee meeting, I want to bring that forward to see if we, you know, if there's something that we want to try to do about that now, or, or whether we want to wait, so.
And the equipment's almost 30 years old and can no longer get parts for it. So it isn't a matter of just being broken, it's the parts aren't there.
So I think that's the biggest challenge right now for food service. I think, you know, we're keeping pace with the rise in cost of food. We're keeping pace with labor costs, and cutting the salad bar is certainly going to help us meet our bottom line, but it's the capital needs that are going to drown us, I think, over, over the next few years.
Other questions?
You mentioned the, the problem with the point-of-sale system is parents not knowing where their balance is, and so they're delinquent. Have you, I've seen some schools that have the point-of-sale system where they give monthly statements out so parents know where they stand. Is that something that's feasible, do you think, which may eliminate the problem of waiting until people accrue so much debt and then trying to go after it?
No, we have, we have over 2,700 students. Today, it took me almost all day to put together 100 letters to go out to those parents that owed $5 or more. It would be a full-time job in the office. I try to, every two weeks, send out letters to those parents, those students, parents whose balance is below $5.
It's a database, isn't it? It couldn't be a mail merge, a database pulling out everybody's certain balance and just giving it more on the head phone? And you shouldn't be doing it. It's too much.
And actually, the principals have been doing it from home causes. What I want?
It might be worth having that door open so that somebody can look at it and see. We can't just automate it.
I mean, we've also had, it suggested to us, and to tell you the truth, we haven't had the money or the time to look into the idea of seeing if we can have that kind of information, is that available online and somewhere? So, you know, that's something that we can look at and work to the future, because that would be a lot easier.
It's, I mean, it's just basically a database, and it's a question of who has permissions, and then can you do a mail merge out of it to let people know?
The other option is that you require them to pay for it with a credit card that's on file, and you bill it monthly.
We know what it's, it's tricky, and there's a credit card fee. You have to, there's a fee for the credit card. Cities and towns don't use credit cards most because of the fee, and you don't let pass them. At least for taxes, yeah.
I'm just curious how it is that kids end up with a balance. When they go, if their card is, if their account is out of money, they're still allowed to get a meal that day?
They're allowed to charge two meals.
So when, when they're running low, and they, does somebody tell them, do you only have this much left to, so they can go home and report that?
There's a banner that comes up on the, the screen, and my employee tells the student that your account is below $3. You need to tell your mom to, or your dad to send in money tomorrow.
And a 1272 letter, you forgot.
Yeah. Some of the schools, we give them a little piece of the paper, but then again, those papers get lost.
So they're allowed two meals, and then a third time they're told no?
Well, at the elementary level, you know, when we're talking about young children, I, I have been calling cafeteria staff that we're not going to have children without having a meal. So we give them, we give them a peanut butter sandwich or a cheese sandwich or something.
And milk.
And milk. Because we're not going to have children.
I just wondered how it works.
We do need a motion, though.
I just have one question. Why, why is one school still have ice cream? Bridge Street School, it, it's a frozen product. It's looked at. The other schools got rid of it basically because it was slowing up the lines too much with the new scan card system.
We need a motion to approve, to authorize participation in the national school lunch program for FY 2009.
Send it.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? So nobody's been actually participating until this day. And Ms. Hartrey is really happy to see that we have bread and water available.
And that's holy bread. Yes, holy.
It's going to be bread and water. All, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
All change the time.
I have a question.
No?
Are we not going to hear what the fees have, are the fees being put up this year or next year?
The other piece is hers.
I thought you said that you would raise the fees or?
Yes, you voted on it.
We've already voted.
Yeah, you've already voted on it. I think you voted in August.
Okay, next is, we have two school improvement plans tonight. We have Jackson Street and JFK. And is Jackson Street going first? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Would Jackson Street go first, Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
I'd like to comment that the improvements in the food service around some of the murals and the having the whole wheat, it's really made a difference at our school. The kids have really enjoyed lunches, asked for the whole wheat bread and the buns and the rice and everything, so I really appreciate the efforts that you're making this tomorrow. So here I am again, here on TV, as the kids would say. They look very happy to be able to come back to share the news on TV. I'm hoping that those who are tuned in I'm hoping that those who are tuning in will also be interested to hear about our plan. I know that you have it in front of you, and you've probably read it now twice. Not really, but I will just go through and point out some highlights, and then ask that if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. I'll go a few pages in. On page three, I wanted to make note that in our school council membership last year, we were missing a teacher to make it equal representation. Parents and teachers this year, Cindy Nomashkin, our school nurse, has joined us, so we're very happy to welcome her on, and also bring her perspective, and as part of our council, it's a really important one. We also honor and thank our community members who have been steadfast in their attendance, and it really also makes a big difference to have community members represented at meetings, almost every meeting we have. I wanted to just point out on page four, though, that some of the statistics are, have changed somewhat in our school profile. They're still similar in terms of risk factors with before. What I did want to say was that last line was saying, we invite you to visit our school to see it for yourself. We really do mean that, and would really welcome you to come visit, because I think not only to make this real for you, but also I know that we're facing perhaps an override election, and I think that if you could come to our school and any of the schools, you might get a better picture, and be able to hopefully promote that initiative more in the community. I know you know our schools, you pay great attention to what we share with you, but I believe that it could be an eye-opener if you spent some time in our schools, and to see what level of work goes on with fewer and fewer people. When I was the early childhood coordinator, and Claire was the director of the Bridge Street site, we organized what we called a child watch, where we had members of the community, including Peter Kokod and others, elected officials, and the woman who was against the override that time, I can't remember her name, but they, we all, we got them all on the bus, and we took, Claire was the driver, and we took them on a tour of what it's, what it's like for a four-year-old in the day. We started at a daycare center at seven in the morning, and we ended our day at six at night when the kids were getting picked up. I know that that made an impact on some people, including the person who had worked hard against the override. I'm not sure she would have changed her vote, but I think she would have felt differently about it. So I really would encourage you to come, and any kind of way we can get you there would be great. I'm skipping over all the tables to the page ten, where we talk about the summary of our year's activities. As I was looking over it again, I came up with a big idea that I think we operate on at Jackson Street, and probably all the schools in North Hampton, is that a major goal of ours is to establish a connection and a relationship with kids and families. And I know that that translates to success in school and success in life. There's a recent study that I have from the University of Illinois that suggests that students have, are much more, the prediction for student success in the workplace is by the social skills that they possess versus their test scores. And I know that we operate with that in mind in our thinking about what we're doing to, to try to narrow the achievement gap, and also to ensure our school's success. Some of the things listed here fall under that category of connection and relationship, and also in terms of showing what students know in a variety of ways, not just test scores. So there we have had a talent show run by a teacher, and that was something that really was something that meant a lot to the kids, because they were able to show talents in a way that they aren't able to show in a regular, everyday classroom model. We had a collaboration between the city of North Hampton and Jackson Street in building our new playground, and that was a model for the kids to see how adults can work together. We have had travel nights so that kids understand that we value other cultures and other places that kids come from. We have what we call now the Strength Finders. This was something that I found out about in talking with the principal on my trip to China last year. She said that they were starting with, they were going to call Strength Finders, and we did it for last year, we're about to begin again. And students are divided up into groups that are cross-grade, third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they're, a teacher is assigned to them maybe once a month, and have tea together, and talk about things. They are often assigned to teachers that they've had in the past, or maybe will have in the future, and they start to identify with that group, and they identify with that adult in their, in their lives. And clearly, there's a lot of research that suggests that kind of connection will make a difference to them. We're doing the theme assemblies, which, again, I found out about in my trip to England, where once a month, there's an assembly after the whole school's been working on this theme. They call them the values themes, but they are big ideas, too. This month, we're working on gratitude, and we're going to have an assembly the day before Thanksgiving to talk about gratitude, excuse me, gratitude. Our civil rights committee is very active, and the connection to relationship and connection and families is that our main emphasis and work this year has been done on looking at homework, and how homework often separates kids, and is not something that allows for success. And we'll be happy to share with you a lot of the research that we've done about how it sets apart families from other families who are more capable of supporting homework. Let's see, where are the other big ideas? The Family Empowerment Project continues, and that is clearly one that we're trying, we believe is really making a difference in our connections with families. Our morning meditation continues, and it's very, one of those areas where the kids and the adults have come to rely on it, and is a way to connect with a lot of people in understanding how we can get, sort of handle on our own emotions. Our Peacemakers continues, and that also is an opportunity for kids to show that they have talents and interests in other things other than paper pencil work. We have now an annual event of honoring our high school graduates who were Jackson Street alums, and we're looking forward to inviting Mr. Casey this year to it. It'll be our fifth one. I started it when I had a grad, fifth grader who I had in my first year graduated from high school, and we're honoring that success, and the students are very tuned in to it. In fact, the students who are here tonight asked if Paul had already shared what he loved about Jackson Street. And I said, he hasn't been there yet, but they look to these big kids as people that they're looking forward to hearing from. I also, another connection this year was when the presidential election, there were four students who graduated from Jackson Street who sought me out in my office to tell me that it was their first time voting. You know, it's not, it really says to me how important it is to make these connections early on. We also have initiative to have fundraising for SMARTboards, which we now have in place for all of our fifth grades. And that was something that we had seen on our field trip last year to England, myself and four other teachers, and realizing that that was going to be a way to make information more accessible to students, and also in a channel, as it were, that they would be able to relate to rather than textbooks. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to highlight, in this year's activities in the progress review, was that we did a survey with families. We are still working on the results of it to try to put it in some form that will be meaningful to everyone. We recognized it was a large job, and it turned out to be a really large job, because we've had about two hundred returns, and there are only about two hundred and fifty families, so we have a lot of information, and we really believe it's going to be important information to us in our planning for our school. In the action plan for this year, we honor goal number one, continuing professional development and training to still pace the development of differentiated instruction practices. We're doing two things that I think are important to highlight. We have a writing consultant who is going, is working with all of our teachers on how to best develop writing skills amongst quite a diverse group of children. And we also have a Mass Cultural Council grant with Bridge Street School that is on integrating the arts with science and social studies, and making that kind of content real for kids. I think that's all I really wanted to highlight. There is a lot in this report about what we do, and what has been done, and what we will continue to do. And I did want to also just stress again how important we believe that community and connection and relationship are in terms of making a successful experience for children at our school. Thank you. Questions? Ms. Iden?
I should make a comment. I was really excited to hear about the SMARTboards. I have one in my classroom, and it was able, I mean, what a difference it made during that year, and as you mentioned, like access for students and that information, but even for ease and efficiency in the classroom for the teacher, to be able to save all of those things that they would normally write on a chalkboard in a race at the end of the day, that they can save that as a file, and refer back good time and time again. It's a really powerful tool, and, you know, I'm encouraging maybe the other principals to look into grant funding, or any, any kind of monies that we can get a hold of to start getting these into the elementary schools, because it's a powerful tool.
It's a very powerful tool.
Could somebody just explain exactly what they are? That was one of my questions.
Well, it's the brand name, actually, SMARTboards, for interactive whiteboard. So it is a whiteboard, then instead of using the pens on, it's connected to a computer, so you can bring up all kinds of things on it, and you can manipulate the image on it.
Essentially, you picture that screen, we pull that down, project things, and right now it's just a projector, but the active board or interactive whiteboard actually has touchpoints on there, so it responds, it's, it really, you operate your computer from touching the board. So when you click on something on your, on the board with your finger, you're actually operating your computer, or you can use digital pens over it, you can pull up video and freeze video and highlight certain parts, it's kind of like John Madden does, like on the football. But really, it's great when you're talking about, like, if you're teaching weather, and you're looking at the vortex of a tornado, you can freeze frame a video from that, and then actually highlight things with pens, the kids can go up and interact with it. And there are a lot of websites that are flash-based, where they click on things, and when you put it up on the SMARTboard, it makes, makes for a whole class lesson, where the kids go up and can like pull weather patterns across the board, and it's a, it's a really neat tool. Another reason, I guess, to go visit Jackson Street and see them in action is because you can't really get a sense of it until you see them using it. When you see kids using it, it's just so powerful, so.
And we went to, how much does one cost? Total package, you need a projector, a laptop, and SMARTboard, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Page one.
For the whole thing, yeah.
We have, we have about three or four here at JFK, and we have several up at the high school as well. We're slowly trying to get them all at the, at the schools, but they are.
Smirk location has quite a few kids, but something new in that.
Well, I've heard, and I vaguely knew what it was, but I really wanted to have it described.
Yeah, and I think in this country, we see it as more for older kids. When we went on our field trip to England, England now, all the public schools in England have SMARTboards from nursery through grade twelve. And Holly, Daisy, fifth grade teacher, walked into a fifth grade classroom, and they were doing perimeter and area, and the teacher introduced her, and he said, from where are you from? And she told where she was from in the school. So he Google-erred Jackson Street, brought up Jackson Street's whole playground and everything on the screen for the kids, asked where her classroom was, then they measured the playing fields, and they did a whole perimeter and area of what Jackson Street had as far as playing fields. You can't do that without some tools like that, and again, the engagement that the kids have with it is phenomenal. You know, we're really hard to keep kids engaged, just as interesting adults standing up there these days, but what they're able to have access to themselves. Hey, any other questions for, for Ms. Iden?
Thank you, Maureen.
We look forward to staying here.
I just want to start by saying, certainly if you have questions, let them go, drop me, and certainly welcome questions at the end. I wanted to say a special thank you to the members of our school council for their dedication to the students and faculty of JFK Middle School. It's also important to recognize and thank our entire educational community, our parents and guardians, community members, volunteers, the PTO, the central administration, the school committee, as we all kind of partner in the education of our students. Sometimes when we're giving our report and presenting our school improvement plan, school hasn't started, but I can give you a little update on what's going on, too, in our progress towards our goals already. We've had a great start to school. It has just been fabulous. The kids are wonderful, and so are the teachers, and it's just been terrific. So what I'd like to do with the school improvement plan is just highlight from our progress report, and then share kind of our continued work towards the goals that we set in what was really a two-year plan, with some measurable objectives. So to start just by sharing upfront, before we go through all the pages, because I know that you've read it, and just a couple of accomplishments. First of all, at the last school committee meeting, I know that the hard work of our teachers and students was recognized around our tremendous accomplishment of making adequate yearly progress for all students, including all subgroups in English Language Arts for two years in a row, and we've now reached a point of no status in English Language Arts around AYP. So I just wanted to recognize the students, we're so proud of them, and the teachers, and, you know, thank you for your commitment to the middle school model and to small class size. And I also wanted to acknowledge the elementary schools for their hard work that certainly contributes to our success on MCAS and student achievement, and certainly in creating a culture in the building that we're trying to create. So I'd also like to say thank you. I know this summer, Patty McGrath and I came and asked for the addition of two special ed teachers to improve instruction for all students in the building, and especially for our special ed students. So I'd like to thank the school committee, and the superintendent, and everybody else who supported our goal. It also, the recommendation came out of our district plan for school intervention team, which is a site-based team that met last year for three full days to analyze our MCAS data, analyze our instructional practices, and come up with a plan of recommendations and suggestions that was really, the entire school community has engaged in implementing this plan, and all the disciplines were represented at these meetings to create this plan, so we have a school-wide effort at effecting some change in our MCAS, and certainly our math MCAS has also seen some improvement. So I just wanted to say thank you. The special education teacher on each team now has created a model that will have a huge impact on student achievement. We're already seeing our special ed students and all of our students definitely making progress as a result of this model. Our recommendation came because it was a successful practice in our English Language Arts classes, but the math and science classes now on each team have a special ed teacher in each of those disciplines to support instruction, and the content teachers are really the experts in the content, and with the professional development that we've been doing around differentiating instruction in the standard-based classroom model, that combined, all the teachers in the building are invested in that, and having that common language and that common practice with the special ed teacher and the regular teacher in the classroom is just making a tremendous difference for everybody. So I just need to say thank you. I've gotten so much positive feedback from the teachers, and from, from parents and guardians, and from the students. It really will, you know, be a very positive thing for everybody in the building. A couple other things to highlight right off the bat, we did change our team names. I know that the Jackson Street School reporters reported on that last time, and we, as a community, made a move to change our team names. I believe the last time the team names were, however they came- I believe the last time the team names were, however they came up with them, it was in 1996. And we felt that it was time to kind of give the students an opportunity to come together as a team community and create a name that reflected kind of what they were all about. We did choose a theme, a green theme at the middle school, kind of out of our focus of the nation and our commitment to sustainable and renewable energy. So we had a green theme. And I'll just kind of repeat again the new names because they're great. And the students were engaged in this activity. The Recyclones, the Hybrid Huskies, the Sun Devils, the Green Monsters, the Green Revolution, the Carver Knights, the Ocean's Eight, and the North Wind. So those are our new team names. Tradition holds fast and there are many, even students and adults in the building who refer to themselves as both right now. But it was a great process and I think it was an important thing to do. The Schoolwide Read, the young man from Jackson Street, his name is Marcus, did a great job of kind of telling you a little bit about the Schoolwide Read. But I just really would like to highlight that because it has just been tremendous. We completed the Schoolwide Read. The, I'll tell you a little bit about it. The Schoolwide Read was designed to engage all students around a common theme in the building. The book was chosen by the English department. It was pre-read by teachers, some parents and guardians. And our goal was to engage students in a common theme, to build a sense of community, to motivate students and adolescent readers. And it has just far exceeded all of our expectations. For the last two weeks in English classes, from homework and reading classes, the students have been reading the book, The Misfits. The topics in the book are name-calling, difference, tolerance, understanding, and advocacy. And today, the students came together in mixed-grade level discussion groups to speak about the topics. They had talking points with the teachers. And it was just tremendous. And tomorrow, they're choosing quotes from the book and they're creating bulletin boards around the themes from the book. Our Student Civil Rights Team has latched onto this and we are participating in National No Name Calling Week. And they're doing activities, the Student Civil Rights Team is leading activities within the building for National No Name Calling Week. So it has just been tremendous. The kickoff day was, everybody had an extended homeroom and the, everybody sat with their book. Everybody in the building sat with their book. It was read kind of regal out over the loudspeaker, the first chapter. And, you know, it was just amazing. Every single person in the book, I mean, in the building at the same time was reading the book. Talking to parents and guardians, talking to students, they've just felt, you know, I've gotten so much positive feedback. Every day, my students tell me a little bit more about The Misfits, so it's just been great. So those are just a few things that I wanted to really highlight real quick. And then to move through the plan just with a few more things. If you look at page seven, I think every year I draw your attention to the page that kind of tells a little bit about the middle school model and who we are and how it works and why it's so important for our students. So we include this in our plan every year. I believe that the school-wide commitment and the community commitment to the middle school, to middle-level learners and having this model in the building, and it is a research-based model, and the strategies for instruction certainly supports our students both at their level of development and their academic achievement. And the data that we've been collecting is certainly showing us that what we're doing is working around student achievement, our MCAS scores, the culture in the building of empowering and engaging students has just created a really great place to go to school and to work. Our attendance has improved. We've certainly seen a decrease in office referrals. And the biggest part of the student achievement, I think, is just having the opportunity for teachers to work together, to speak about students, but also to connect the learning for the students. So we're making lots of interdisciplinary connections and having the opportunity to have teams in those small learning communities. And the opportunity now to have a special ed teacher on each of those teams to take part in the planning and the conversation. So we always highlight the middle school model. I think it's an important part of what we do. Our progress report, just real quick around our goal of maintaining a positive, safe, and secure learning environment. And the thing that's good about this is we really wrote this as a two-year report. So if I look through my progress report, I wanted to go through these things again for you and our action plan, I promise. But we do now have a JFK Civil Rights Team, we have a General Civil Rights Team, and we have a Student Civil Rights Team. It's really, we've engaged in lots of really good conversations. And the students team has really taken off. The students report to the general team. The students have even asked me twice a month now. So that certainly is a highlight of something that we've been doing. The O Ambassadors Club, the Sandbox Group. Our students are so engaged in things that, you know, are important to them and they really want to make a difference. And I think O Ambassadors, you know, the students that are involved in that, and the Sandbox Group really speaks to that. We continue to do our Grade Eight Community Service Project every year. The eighth graders have just completed 10 hours of community service. They also just did a showcase showcasing all of the activities that they did in their community service. Community Service Learning Grant that we have, last year we did, we have a partnership with HECC in the building. We also did an energy conservation product, project with kilowatt meters. That was one of the things that came out of our Community Service Learning Grant. We're also working with the Lions Club and the North Hampton Regional Tation Center, the Senior Center. So we're really making some nice connections there with the students and kind of giving back and learning from their community service. Let's see. I talked about the District Plan for School Intervention, so I really don't need to talk too much more about that. The one thing that stands out for me was it was a group of teachers in the building across disciplines identifying ways that each of the disciplines in the building could support students around achievement in math. The District Plan for School Intervention was written because of our status, our AYP status in math, also obviously supporting students in their learning. But all of the disciplines came together and identified ways that they could help students achieve in math. You know, things like wrapping in certain areas, timelines, all sorts of things that related to the data that we analyzed that showed us where our areas of weakness were. We also continue our, this is the third year of our Schoolwide Professional Development around the standard space instruction. If you come into the building, you'll see in all of the classrooms, an activator, which is a do-now. The students come in and they immediately engage in a lesson with an activator. There are agendas posted in all the classrooms, a mastery objective for the lesson is there. And we continue to work on differentiating instruction and, you know, thinking, higher-order thinking strategies and questioning and just working on instructional strategies that support all learners. This year's professional development, we took it a step further and we looked at, really can get some more. So we're really kind of focusing on assessment. We've also looked at two benchmark assessment systems to do some benchmarking in all of our disciplines and of common end-of-unit assessments and being able to measure students' progress throughout the year. So that's something else that we began last year and we're working on this year. Our improved MCAS scores, you can see listed for you there, the areas where we met our goals. We set ourselves 5% improvement benchmarks over a two-year timeframe. Many of, and this is not this year's data, this is not from this year, it's from the '07 data. And we met our goal for the aggregate in many of our subgroups, as you can see, starting on page 16. You know, moving from warning to proficient, moving from proficient to advanced. And we met many of our goals already and we're anticipating hopefully meeting more of those. The other thing that we set goals for ourselves were around attendance. And we made improvement for all of our subgroups and for our aggregate in attendance around our goal of 95% attendance for all students. We spent a lot of time addressing attendance and really kind of educating and informing and working together with parents and students around improving attendance. And I think it's worked. We spent a lot of time really trying to reinforce the importance of being here in order to achieve as a student. So you can see all that data. And certainly our office referrals were reduced by 36% in one year. So that was quite an accomplishment. We weren't shooting for 5% on that one. So anyway, we, you know, there's lots of things that we're trying to do to involve the community. And I think our biggest goal at this point is to really share all of the things that we're doing at JFK with the community, making those partnerships, but also getting the information out. I just completed a four-page newsletter, they'll have that shortly, and it'll really highlight all the things that are happening here. And we appreciate your effort in, you know, letting people know what wonderful things are happening at JFK. So as I said, the, our action plan goals have stayed fairly similar to last year's and as have our objectives. I can tell you that we are in the process, one of the teams is piloting a portfolio assessment. It's going to be fabulous. The students are doing their own goal setting around the portfolios they're putting together on this team. We're hoping that this will be a launch for all the teams to do portfolio assessment. One of the pieces of that that I like best is that the students are going to ask adults in the building who aren't their teachers to review and help them put together the portfolio and around their goals. So I think that's a great initiative for this year. The other thing that stands out to me beyond all of the instructional things that are happening in this building are all, is the investment and the involvement of the kids. We have so many clubs right now happening in the building. We have so many teachers facilitating after-school opportunities for students. I walked out of the building today and there was 20 kids standing there and they were in the chamber choir. You know, it's just terrific. It's just amazing. We have two groups of science club kids, we have an outing club, we have a newspaper. The activities and the kids staying here after school and the opportunities that they have are just terrific. So I did really want to highlight that as something that I think is really important here at JFK that's happening. I think probably to highlight maybe one or two more things, the Study Skills Program is back. We are so excited about that. A group of teachers worked very hard over the summer and during the spring. We piloted a one skill last spring. It took off and we are now back to a full and complete Study Skills Program here. Binders, you know, Skill of the Month, our skills are organization, listening, note-taking, and test-taking skills. So that is just tremendous. I think probably that will do it. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer questions. I just really wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate all our partnerships within the community and certainly everybody's efforts to make sure that, you know, our goal of student achievement is supported and met here. And that's about everybody, really. And I do need to give the English department some credit for The Misfits because they really organized it and did a terrific job. So I wanted to put that one off. So that's JFK. And that is awesome.
Ms. Menon? A couple of comments. I should have said this, I guess when Boyne was here, but it took a little while for it to kind of wash over me. But I think it's, I have known for a long time that we have great staff in our buildings. All of our teachers are wonderful. I can't say enough about someone who would dedicate their life to spending it with my kid, teaching them the things that I don't or can't teach them. But I'm intrigued by what you're doing, what you've just said about the portfolio thing and how it's going to make connection with the different adults in the building than the children who already had a connection with. Just as Ms. Agnes said, that she was doing things where they are making connections with the none. And I think that we had a similar kind of program at the high school for the last couple of years where students have been, where there's been an adult that's supposed to be looking for kids who don't seem to have any real connection with anyone else and sort. I mean, in today's society, it just seems so imperative that we make those kinds of connections. And so I can't thank you and your staff and teachers throughout the district enough for looking out for kids and trying to make, you know, that one-to-one personal connection work.
Yeah, thanks. That's really what they do. It's amazing.
Well, it adds to a student's competence. It gives them one more perspective, one more mirror with which to, from which to see themselves, a different way of, you know, it's, sometimes that's all it takes is just hearing someone else's view of what your capabilities are to convince you that you have them. The other thing, the other thing I wanted to say was I wanted to ask you a question. It's not specifically related to the plan, but it just was something that hit me. And that is, we've got all sorts of standards. We've got curriculum and we've done a wonderful job over the last few years in putting together curricula that matches the frameworks that helps us with MCAS and it's structured in the right order to, so that the kids know what they need to know when they're being tested on it and so forth. I'm curious now, particularly in this building, about interdisciplinary stuff. Are the frameworks set up in a way that lends itself to interdisciplinary stuff? And are those kinds of projects still going on in this building?
Yeah, we have so many opportunities. There's a work on the child labor unit that, you know, all the teachers on the team are a part of, whether it's writing, whether it's social studies, whether it's math, you know, making crafts and things like that of the frequency of occurrences in different places of child labor. So the frameworks, I think our teachers are really good at looking at and planning, I'm doing this unit, what in this subject kind of lends itself to support that. And I think we all know that for students, when they can make those connections in different places, it really helps them with an understanding. So I think our team meeting every other day when we do some planning within our teams, with the five-person teams now, the four-person teams now, they really are conscientious of making sure that those things happen as much as they can. We have our Celebration of Ancient Greece that the entire seventh grade participates in. And that is something that is all four core subject areas, the reading teachers as well, and then our exploratory teachers participate in that and make that, you know, something. So we have art teachers now who are really trying to work with our core academic subject area teachers to kind of do cross-curricular activities. But with the Celebration of Ancient Greece, they're making mosaic tiles and art to display at the Celebration of Ancient Greece. So our family and consumer science person did, you know, costumes, period costumes, so.
Yeah, I can say that, you know, last year when we were doing our professional development days and our teacher professional days, what Leslie just said is absolutely true. The department chairs and all the various art and music and PE, I had the privilege of sitting with them to talk about how we could do that. And they themselves were already working and talking about, well, we need to know what's going on in the various subject areas so that we can talk and figure out how we can do this particular music lesson so that it complements what's happening in the various classes, not only here at the middle school, but also at the elementary level.
You and I sat on a subcommittee a few years ago about community service learning. And the idea was to, when somebody creates a lesson plan or whatever you call it that includes a specific project, we shouldn't just let that evaporate into the ether. It would be so nice if we could have, if we had a curriculum library that kept ideas like that and the materials that they used and just like our own reference library and stuff. It would be wonderful if we could also create one for interdisciplinary thematic-type units that, you know, so the teachers don't have to go back and reinvent it, that they have something, whether they use it as a whole or whether they use it as an inspiration.
We do have a huge kind of Celebration of Ancient Greece curriculum guide for all the teachers. So any new teacher comes into the building in seventh grade and has that opportunity to see it. But yeah, it is a great idea. We should probably do it for more, have an opportunity. But, and I think the other thing that helps with that too is our entire building, every single teacher in the building has been participating in this ongoing professional development around instructional strategies. And so they have a chance to talk to each other, they're using a lot of the same instructional, you know, methods. So it has given us an opportunity to integrate different disciplines around many different things. Sure?
Yeah. I wanted to comment, just having kids now in the school and it's just a, you know, a small perspective, but just what's noticeable to me is the passion that the teachers that I've met and the guidance put out there. And it's genuine and, you know, they love their subject, they teach it for a reason. But it's palpable and it's neat to feel your kids sort of around these people who just love what they're doing and want them to learn it. And it's, it's just, I don't know, it's just a compliment to what I've seen.
Thank you, appreciate that. I know the teachers really appreciate that.
I'm delighted to see you have a study post. Thank that. I just think it's so...
I just think it's so key anytime in your life to go onto high school if, if you're weak in those areas. And not everybody has that confidence in high school, so.
Right. I think this is a really good age to really kind of strongly reinforce that and teach those skills. One of the things that we have been doing are doing vertical meetings with departments, with the high school. One of the things that we were hearing from the high school teachers was, you know, these are the skills in the areas where we could really help the students be better prepared for high school. And so we said we need to get this back and we did. But those department meetings between the middle school and high school have been really good and helpful in that area. All right.
Thank you. It was a really comprehensive report. And I think the metrics that you showed impressive game this year.
Thanks very much.
And anything else on this? So go to our next topic, which is just.
Ten minutes before. Okay. We all have a packet in front of you. We have first item on the agenda, it's a student enrollment. I have given you an updated as of December 4th. Numbers are looking very good, both at the elementary and middle and high. At your recommendation, what I did is we did not update the middle and high school. We'll, we'll update it after the first of the year, of the year. But there's some, when we have some, after the December 1 counts. The only num, the only class that looks fairly, that is significantly high would be the least fifth, fourth grade class. Otherwise, all the other class sizes are, are, at the elementary level are reasonable. And I know that Leslie just walked away, but, you know, I think that we have made a commitment or I have made a commitment to keep class sizes very reasonable because of the, the finding that we have here at JFK of corrective action. And clearly that, that, that has made a difference as well. You have a personnel report. And the, we have a retirement. Mr. Jeff Holman, who is a teacher here at JFK Middle School, 33 years within Northampton Public Schools. Truly been a committed teacher here and certainly will be a great loss to the Northampton Public Schools. And I wish him the best of luck. I also would like to recognize a teacher who passed this, earlier this fall that I did not have the honor of working with, but it was a teacher by the name of Grace Ryan who did work within the Northampton Public Schools for 21 years. He did pass away and she was a math teacher here within the Northampton Public Schools. And I did want to recognize her and extend the condolences for Northampton Public Schools and the school community. In your packet, we have the request for three field trips. First one is JFK middle, first two are from JFK Middle School. One is for Montreal Quebec, May 27th, or the, May 22nd through the 24th, for Miss Jane's French class and to New York in April for Mr. DeLu's French cla, uh, Spanish class. And the third is for a high school class, Mr. Derby's high school class to go to Brattleboro or Vermont for his ropes class in December, early December.
Do you want to take them separately or together? What's your preference?
Together.
Together.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve these field trip requests?
So moved.
Sorry, Senator.
The only concern I have is on Mr. DeLu's trip. He says that the source of funding is parents. Say eighty of a hundred dollars per student. What happens if the parent doesn't have the money?
Typically, they do, they do provide support and I will follow up.
Typically, they put it on the, on the sheet though.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. You know, and honestly, because I was out for a period of time, I didn't have a chance.
That's okay.
But I will make sure.
Make sure that no kid's going to be left behind, so to speak.
Yeah. This Spanish and Latin, this, this group? The Spanish arts and ancient Roman art. He's saying. I think he said it was, have a population. Spanish, but usually all. Yep. Eighth grade Spanish and eighth grade Latin class.
And eighth grade so long, if you consider that was it?
Yeah.
Any other concerns, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Bones, you ready?
I know that I spoke to you last month about the November 4th Professional Development Day and I shared with you all this wonderful booklet that HEC helped put together. I just wanted to tell you, I was so disappointed that I wasn't able to be there, but I can tell you that it was very successful. I heard nothing but wonderful comp, positive feedback about it. So a big thank you to Cecilia Buckley from the Hampshire Educational Collaborative who helped us help organize this and put it all together for a job well done. Of course, Professor Steve Sarishi from UMass who provided, who helped and his staff who provided free professional development to set, to our staff and to those member of districts who participated in this professional development as well. And it was a very successful professional development day.
I just wanted to say that last night at the Hampshire Educational Collaborative joint meeting with the steering committee and board members, Nick Young, the superintendent from Hadley, Hadley?
Hadley.
Said that he thought that, that he was very pleased with these offerings and that he thought it had been a great first step. And he only had one question for Cecilia about next year. And that was, what date should we look to schedule it? So that was another.
We have a date along.
That was, so I mean, I think it was phenomenally successful. A wonderful collaborative effort started by the individual districts working together and then, you know, facilitated through the collaborative, so it did work out very well.
Yeah, it was really exciting. It really was. I was really kind of disappointed. But it, and I think I had shared with you last month that we're looking at possibly making this happen on a larger scale and hiring a, a big, you know, name speaker.
But one of the best things about this thing and the way it was offered was that it gave the opportunity for a lot of people who normally are not really, it's not that they weren't welcomed in professional development opportunities before, but they weren't targeted for them. And this gave such a variety of offerings that low, you know, smaller numbers of people who have, don't have any job like, so PE teachers or the art teachers found things that they could participate with other art teachers from other districts, which made it more, more individualized for them. And it was just.
Thank you. Thank you. Cooley, I, I wanted to share with you, you may or may not remember, last year I had not, I shared with you that we applied for and received a grant that, that involved Cooley Dickinson and it's a three-year grant. We received the second installment of the, of the grant recently of $31,773. This year, we used the first installment this year to provide services to the, to the district. And working with Karen and Craig Jurgensen, our director of pupil services and our director of health, we, I, and actually meeting with the principals, we decided that the best way to meet the, the requirements of the, of the initiative, we decided to use the funds. The, the definition of the grant was increasing understanding access to mental health services. So I had to have a mental health background. So we provided consulting, clinical services, onsite consultation intervention and planning and outreach to, to our, our elementary schools and through middle school. And what we did is we actually provided a consultant who helped the elementary through K-8, parents and families to, to, if they needed support with consulting services and mental health services. This consultant actually helped these families locate the mental health services. And that often is a very difficult job to do, in particular when a family is in crisis. And if they don't have the proper insurance or they don't know how to access insurance. So this consultant is actually working with our schools and our school counselors and school adjustment counselors and the families to connect up the, the agencies and individual students. And Dr. Sharon Salina, the school consultant, actually visits with each district school on a regular basis and meets monthly with, with our school psychologists and principals to talk about particular needs and cases. We also initiated a social skills support, an intervention consult or consultant around students with autism, which we identified a need at the, at the district level. So we've actually contracted with an individual consultant to support our schools in that area. We also facilitated a six-week program coordinated by Casa Latino for Latino parent group, with a Latino parent group around, addressing areas around mental health and special education topics. And this will begin, it was completed in April and May and it'll again start up in January 2009. We, they worked on a draft of Mental Health Resource Guide that will be shared with families and parents. And it's been a really very, I think for the first year of the grant, a very successful year. It's provided structure and intensive support and approaches to, to the families and students and administrators. We've provided parent training. We've provided consultation and tried to not, what I, when I met with Karen and we talked about this grant, you know, thirty-three thou, or thirty thousand, seems like a lot of money, but when we're talking a district, you know, with a lot of needs, in particular mental health, what I, what we decided was try to find a way that we could reach as many needs as possible, but not spread ourselves too, so thinly. And I think we did a fine job and we're going to continue to, to utilize these funds to, to expand. So I just wanted to let you know what we, what we've done and what we'll continue to do and I'll keep you informed. And lastly, I just, I wanted to congratulate and let you know, I think Lisa said that, you know, she recognized that we had quality staff and, you know, I know I've always said that. But we absolutely do. I wanted to congratulate our own coordinator of transportation, Ms. Jo, Mrs. Joy Winnie. Joy passed and the National Association of Pupil Transportation Examination. And she is now, she has now received a Director of Transportation certification. And she is the only one with this certification in the state. And, which is quite an honor and so that you know what that entails. In order to do that, the specific certification requirements either, requires you to either have a college degree and/or acceptable career profile, minimum five years' experience as a director and/or supervisor of transportation, attendance at two National Association Pupil Service of, of Pupil Transportation annual conferences, certificate of completion indicating 20 hours of contact time from an NAPT approved workshop, a presentation at national or state meetings, or accepted project or published article, completion of an NAPT certification standards, including the written exam, which is what she completed, and continuous annual membership. And then, and what does it mean? It means that she, the professional certification provides personal satisfaction, obviously, for attaining the, the level of achievement within her profession. It means commitment to the requirement of the job and participation in an additional training to exemplify dedication to the best possible job in pupil transportation field. So, you know, she, she decided to, to go to Louisiana or New Orleans. Where was it? Out of state to receive this training, Cecilia. To receive this training. It was a full week's worth of training.
It was in North Carolina.
North Carolina. A whole week's worth of this training and participate in the training and get, and, and study. She was pretty nervous and she passed the test. And I congratulate her. And that's it.
Great. Give her, give her compliments.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Okay, Ms. Wright.
Okay. You should all have my report already in front of you. If we go to the first page, we have four contracts for approval tonight. The first is to a daycare provider called Circle of Friends, $12,500. This is to subsidize childcare for working families and it'll be paid for out of the CPC grant. Second contract is with Geehausen for $20,000. This is for water and juices for the cafeteria and this will be paid out of the Food Service Revolving Fund. The third contract is with HEC, $6,983. This is our annual membership fee. This is paid out of the $2,000 account. And then the last contract is with Nick Heschulis, who is an artist in residence who is paid for out of a mass cultural council grant. And he's an integral part of the Ancient Greece Project that is always done here at JFK.
Do we have approval of the contract?
Second?
Any discussion? I want to hear. I think it would be helpful to explore the pitcher cup solution for water in the cafeteria in terms of reducing plastic waste.
One thing I didn't say when Carol was here is, as you know, the schools are all embarking with Green Teens and getting, working with Karen Boquillan, who's the city recycling coordinator. We had a meeting last week with Karen Boquillan and the parent that's spearheading this with Carol Demora and myself, because we all recognize that the cafeteria is one of the main places that we can cut consumption. And so Carol is very willing to work with that. One thing that that meeting helped for Karen Boquillan and for the, the parent was to talk about the constraints that we're under. Because certain things that we do in the cafeteria that generate trash or waste are done because we don't have the proper equipment or we don't have the right kitchen set up to do what we need to do. So there's a, so it was a good meeting because we got to talk about the impediments to making some of the things more green. But then we can also, we're, you know, looking at what green things we can do that aren't going to cost money. Because Carol and I know the bottom line is right now we can't afford to have appropriation dollars supporting food service. So within those constraints, we're working.
I just have to say, I've been on the school committee for 18 years and my first year on the school committee, I asked why we had styrofoam tray, plates and trays in the cafeteria. It's, it's taken almost 20 years, but we're getting there finally.
Right.
But it's just.
Well, and some, some of the school, the kitchens, you know, when I've been out to these schools with Carol, some of the kitchens are not set up. For example, at Ryan Road, we have two windows. We serve out of two windows. You can't take and trays through the same window that you're serving out of. So there's, there's functional problems to, in everything. But, you know, we're working on it and Carol is switching from, she's switched from styrofoam in many places to those cardboard kind of containers that are more, that are compostable. So, and we're looking at composting. I know we had it years ago and we're looking at seeing if we can get back there. And Karen's offered her assistance to look at ramps as well. Okay. Just to give you an update.
One question from Mr. Case.
Oh, well, just an alteration. I don't know if this is really taking into the food budget or anything, but also in my head, there's eight vending machines at the high school. So, I mean, that's how we get a lot of water up there. So if you just want to get inspiration as far as, you know, going green and all, might be more of an economic issue, but, you know, it is a factor.
Right. Yeah, the vending machines actually supply quite a bit of revenue towards the food service account.
Do, do kids carry around water bottles that they just fill up?
Um, yeah. I mean, people carry around algins a bit, but, I mean, two of the vending machines are like water machines and one of them is in the cafeteria. So, I mean, I bet, you know, at least 20 people buy them for each lunch, maybe.
They carry a banister for that. If there was an algae bottle, like, and had a chest of algae bottles, they'd.
There actually are them.
They have them.
Yeah. Our class actually is doing a fundraiser.
I know.
So if you guys want to support class 2009, just. But they're actually not used that much. I mean, I would say that buying one bottle of water a day is a bit more popular than bringing algae. I mean, it's also probably just more convenient for people. I mean, it is for me. I mean, I don't buy that much water, but when I do, I, I don't usually make conscious decisions wanting to build a school.
I know one thing we talked about with the principals at snack time is rather than selling snack milk, which we were having some issues around, just having maybe the PTO or somebody donate bottles so that every kid had a bottle on their desk, or that they could go fill up at any time. So that's something that we've been talking about as well.
Just one more on the water thing. I don't know if I missed it when Carol spoke to Chief. Did you talk much about bottled water, Karen?
I don't know. This is bad. But, you know, it's, I mean, it's a great thing we're addressing. I think we should be more thoughtful as a district, because it gives kids perception that the water in the school is not good if you choose to sell it in a cafeteria. And I think that carries into their life, and they assume bottled water is better, which we know it's not, and sometimes not what it says on the label. And the economics and the ecology and the environmental impact, not just of the plastic, but of how they get that water and the fuel, and, I mean, if you really read about it, it's startling how bad it is, the whole industry. So it would be something I, I mean, that maybe we should think about as a district, how we, how we get our kids water in school, because I think it's a, it's a bad perception that we're putting out. We just, as being appointed out, we've spent twenty-eight million dollars to make sure the water.
Twenty-six million dollars. The water will be good.
It's good.
It's good.
Drink up.
Cheers.
Okay, moving right along.
I'm just going to real briefly bring you up today to where we are with the 2009 budget.
Did we vote on those contracts?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody taking minutes or?
Can someone tell me? I think she got that.
I think she got that, because we had already gone to discussion.
She left her in discussion.
I'll.
You'll fill in.
Okay. So if you turn to the Munis printout, you can see that our, if you turn to the second page of it, you can see our appropriation from the city this year is twenty-three million one eighty-seven four seventy-nine. That's that original appropriation column. Transfers and adjustments, that three forty-nine, that's just the encumbrances from the prior year. So right now, we're working with twenty-three million five thirty-six six sixty-six. We've spent six million. We've got a hundred and seventy-nine still encumbered, and we've got seventeen million left. So we're twenty-seven, twenty-seven point two percent expended, which is just about where we were this time last year. So things are going as expected. The next page, two pages over, you'll see school choice. This is the first time I've showed you school choice this year. So I'll just take a minute to go through. At the top is the prior year, how much we, of old school choice money we were using. The first two items, the electricity at the high school and JFK, and the school committee dues and memberships, those equal four hundred thousand dollars. And if you remember, when we were doing the '09 budget, we used four hundred thousand dollars of school choice reserves to fund the budget. The other three items were things that were funded in school choice last year that weren't complete when we closed out the fiscal year, so we had to carry those. Those were bills that were sitting out there but hadn't yet been complete. So you can see of old money, we are using four hundred and forty-seven, forty-seven from the previous year, four hundred coming into '09. The second half is the amount of school choice money that we got from the students who came here as school choice students in '08, and we spent it in '09. So as you remember, the money we bring in this fiscal year right now, we're going to be using for the students in 2010. We brought in one million, five thousand dollars. We budgeted one oh-two. Of course, we didn't exactly use the number when we were doing that, but it's not far off. And you can see those are the things that you voted out of school choice. So right now, we're planning on using one point four million from school choice. We've spent to date two hundred and forty-one thousand, so we have right now one point two left. If you look at the small print below, the balance in school choice on the first day of this fiscal year was one point six million. And as you can see, we've planned on using one point four. So right now, in this fiscal year, we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar reserve. Pretty small. This is the smallest expense since I've been here, and I'm going on almost my fifth, fourth, fifth year. So last year, we had three hundred thousand. I think the year before, we had over four hundred thousand. So it's a concern going into next year. The next chart just shows you where we are in unemployment. Because of some of the layoffs we had, we are spending more in unemployment than we had at this point last year. You can see comparisons to all, to many previous fiscal years, but you can see we spent much more in July, spent about the same in August, starting to come down. We've spent thirty-four thousand dollars out of the hundred thousand dollars that we had budgeted for unemployment. And if the trend continues, it should just continue to taper off. The next page just shows you a summary of all the other special and revolving funds, and what we've brought in in revenue thus far, and what we've expended so far. So nothing on this sheet is alarming at any, at any point. I think our bus revolving revenues are up a bit from the previous time and from this time last year. I'm a little concerned about the athletic revolving fund, because it ended the year with only fourteen hundred dollars in it. So all of these accounts actually started the year with pretty, much lower balances than they have in the past, because we've just been squeezing these accounts as much as we can. I've added to this typical report that you see throughout the year, the after-school revolving fund. We still have, while we are not supporting in our budget an after-school program, there are after-school programs that we're running through our books that are operating at Leeds. There's the Early Bird Late Bird, the LEAP program. Ryan Road has a program they call YEP, which is Youth Enrichment Program, and JFK is just starting up their after-school program. So while these programs aren't supported with any, any district funds, they're being supported by fees paid by parents and by PTOs making donations. And mostly, it's our staff working in these programs. So the good thing is, it's an opportunity for staff to pick up some extra money, and we're paying it through payroll, so everything is above board. I also added the Smith College donation on here so that you can see where we are in using that.
On your revolving funds, a couple of them show negative, as in they spent more to date than they collected.
Right.
Do you expect to collect more?
No, which one, which one are you looking?
I'm looking on the enrichment revolving funds, and so for instance, Leeds, Early Bird Late Bird.
Oh, you're on the next.
I'm sorry.
Jumped ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought that's where you were.
The Bridge Street and Jackson Street ones are not operating. They're not operating this year, and, but what happened was, several bills came in after the end of the fiscal year that were unbeknownst to me. You know, Josh, our coordinator, left on June 30th. There were a number of bills that came in after later. So that's why they show a negative. Leeds, LEAP and Early Bird Late Bird, I'm not concerned that one is in the negative and one's in the positive. Leeds, the, the people operating the Leeds understand that Early Bird Late Bird's going to subsidize LEAP. So as long as those two funds together net out, we're not, we all have an understanding that that's not a problem. So we will be watching this to make sure that these don't go into the red, particularly because the school district funds are not supporting this at all. But the deficits in Bridge and Jackson are because we closed, if you remember, you had to supplement the after-school program last, when we closed it out, by eleven thousand dollars out of school choice. It was a vote that I asked you to take in July, because that account was in the red. I would have asked you to take a little bit more, but I didn't know these bills were out there. So one other thing I just want to draw your attention to, I've already told you about the unallocated reserves that we have in school choice. You can see that that's reiterated on that page that has all of the special and revolving funds. I just want to talk.
Can you just tell me what this E-Rate, am I forgetting?
E-Rate is funds that we get that Bill Zornbusch applies for. It's tied into technology and the phone bill, and I really wish I could tell you more.
It's allocated, it's to poverty in the district, and there's a further, a couple of indicators. You pay it on your phone bill, and then it comes back to, to, kind of, to school districts across the country specifically for technology. You have to tell them what you're going to spend it on, and then they reimburse you. I think that's right, right?
We get, Bill does a whole bunch of paperwork, and then we get a lump sum, and then we can spend it on technology.
Right, but it's, it's a, it's a lot of work for, for not a big amount of money, I think.
Yeah.
So it's been going on to some.
Oh, yeah.
So anyways, I just want to bring your attention to circuit breaker. The balance that we had going into '09, which was circuit breaker funds that had been left over from previous years, was four hundred and seventy thousand. Now, in order to balance the '09 budget, if you remember, we, we not only used four hundred thousand from school choice, but we tapped another sixty thousand dollars of our reserve in circuit breaker. And then to fund the two special ed teachers here at JFK, we tapped it another seventy-seven thousand. We also have had some contested cases that we were keeping a reserve for, that one, it was a higher reserve about a month ago. We think we're going to get by with about one twenty-six. So right now, unallocated reserves that we have that are uncommitted in the, in the circuit breaker are two hundred and six thousand dollars. But I will caution you that I have had several conversations with Dr. Jerkensen, and I would, I would guess we're going to wipe that out this year. It has been a very, very difficult year as far as out of district. So we're looking at that. We will not be able to retain that surplus this year.
And also, because circuit breaker is one of the things that took a hit with the NISC cuts at the state level, right? So next year, we're probably going to see a huge reduction.
I don't know. Right now, with the word we've been given is that we will get our seventy-two percent. What they usually have done is in the last payment, they've given us seventy-five percent. They've promised us seventy-two, but every year they've had circuit breaker, we've gotten seventy-five. So we've always gotten an extra ten or fifteen thousand dollars on top of it. We're not going to see that this year. But right now, I don't think they've backed away from, you know, in any way from the seventy-two. That would be tremendously huge for us if we lost that, because I think this year, we're anticipating to get over half a million dollars.
I don't think they're going to back off on the seventy-two, but. I thought, I thought they had raised the number, though. Didn't they, the threshold, the floor for reimbursement?
Well, they raise it every, they raise it every year, you know, which doesn't help us, because then the threshold from which we get reimbursement just keeps going up and up. It was thirty-three, I think it's around thirty-five now. So, so, but I, I do anticipate that we will wipe out this two hundred and six this year, and we may have to tap into the school choice reserve as well. I'm planning to meet with Dr. Jerkensen, but we do have some, a lot of move-ins and other issues that have come up. So anyways, I just wanted to give you guys kind of the, the, yeah, heads up on that. The next page we already looked at, which was just a more detailed version of the after-school. And I think that's it. The end of the year report for fiscal '08 is almost done. I should finish it tomorrow, or Tuesday at the latest, and we'll be uploading it after getting the signatures, I mean, the mayor's signature, the city auditor's signature, the superintendent's signature. And then in the December meeting, I'll bring copies for everybody, and we'll kind of walk through, so we can see where the school budget, what we talked about as being twenty-seven million, is really more like thirty-eight, thirty-nine million dollars. Because the end of the year report brings every piece of the budget in, all of the grants, which we don't spend a lot of time here talking about, but it brings in all of the grants, and it brings in all of the debt service and health insurance and everything else that's on the city side of the budget that goes into the school budget. So I think it's a good exercise for us to go through, to look at the end of the year report. It gives us, I think, some guidance as we move forward about what, how much it really costs around the schools.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports, we did accept the masses beginning of the year. Are there any reports from any of the subcommittees?
Curriculum met with, let's see, Tracy Dawson-Green and Ms. Wilson. We went over the social studies curriculum one more time. Just going over, there was some concern around the eighth grade having only half a year of American history mixed with world, and that presentation was really helpful for us to see that, that it actually is a justified move to do that, that what we're doing is connecting the work that we're doing in, or the work in, or what they're experiencing in world, or in American history to world history. But it also gives them a full year of American history before they take the MCAS in eleventh grade, was it? That they, they take the American Street MCAS portion there. They also shared with us a display, kind of going through the progression of the topics that they cover. It was really helpful for us to see that, to look at the textbooks that they're using. And it was really comprehensive. So we're, I think, very confident in the curriculum that we're still trying out this year. We'll obviously get feedback. They said they're going to be meeting as a team to talk about what's working and what needs revamping, but they're, they're pretty excited about it, and I think that came with us, and we're pretty confident in that.
Any other reports from any other committees?
Budget properties in, in caf, since the last school committee meeting, but we have a meeting next Thursday.
I, it may end up being canceled.
Oh, okay. Well, we have one scheduled, I say two. And Rosen Polis, Rado Rosen Polis. Outstanding. Where this is an anarchy, maybe. I, I thought that we probably were supposed to bring up the thing that was tabled about Kathy's suggestion about two-year terms for assignment to subcommittees. That she suggested that when we approved our rules and procedures at the beginning of the year, and it was delegated to the Rules and Policy Committee, and we tabled it there, because we had an entire year before it became important. So we put it off, but we haven't. Yeah. And we should probably get to it now, but it, it then occurred to me that for, at least the, the, what do you call them, outlaw members that are elected, they only have a two-year term. So if we were to say that we were going to do two-year terms, they wouldn't really be able to do a two-year term, because they only have one year left on their term on the, so I'm not sure that whatever we would decide now would be able to be effective next year. So maybe we bought ourselves another year.
And I, and I thought we did discuss it in Rules and Policy, and said we were going to bring that back for discussion.
I thought we just said that we were going to, we discussed it briefly and said that we would discuss it again.
I think we need to get the Cracker Jack Research Team on that. Figure out what you've done so far.
Yeah. All I know is I'm going to be on Rules and Policy again next year.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Funny business?
Business, yeah.
New business?
Yes, new business. Many old businesses.
It's not exactly new, but this is the last meeting before the MASC conference on November nineteenth. And as far as I know, we cannot have any school committee going to the, to the meeting, so I guess that means we have not a lot of time to be doing the resolutions, giving that person some alcohol. But.
I thought there was somebody standing here.
I just, I think, we have, I don't know about, it seems to me that we have received more than the requisite number of reminders and invitations to attend the MASC conference, which might imply that it's, our registration is lower this year than they had hoped. And I might suggest to them that someplace closer than Hyannis.
Like Worcester.
Might, might be in order. I, I know people, we've talked about that.
No, didn't we?
I mean, suggesting that, because it's easier for somebody to make it a day trip and.
Yeah, I mean, I think, maybe, maybe they've realized that. I mean, they had it in Worcester for a few years now, the, maybe they've realized that their registration is down because of that, but.
Superintendent Sayes, very important, Mr. Do you want to just speak today?
There are several issues that are going to be discussed, the readiness, the readiness schools are going, there are several of the governor's issues are going to be discussed at this conference, the readiness schools, the consolidation issues, whether the governor has, and the commissioner.
commissioner are that actually, are, is actually supporting consolidation in schools. There's a potential of that they'll, come this spring, there may end up the legislation put out there that incur, requiring, possibly requiring, if not strongly encouraging smaller districts to consolidate if they don't have central office capacity. So, we're no longer, you know, and the last time we talked about this, I said that our numbers, our student enrollment would be okay, but now we're looking at central office capacity. We do not have central office capacity. So, we would not, we, you know, I would imagine based on what I'm hearing and I will, I intend on, my hope is to be able to get there so that I can listen. I missed the officers' meeting last week because I wasn't able to go. My hope is to be able to get there so that I can listen to the, to what they have to say. There is chatter of other initiatives as well. There's, there is information that is important. I will be there and I'll go get back.
The, to that point, there was a quite long, so this is my HECC report as well. There was a quite long and involved discussion last night at the HECC meeting regarding the issue of consolidation in smaller rural schools. Yeah, well, Nick said basically that their definition has now changed to anybody less than 5,000 students, which would mean that 85% of the districts in the state and the Commonwealth fall into that category. And, and he said that they did say that they intended to force regionalization for any districts that weren't already thinking about it. So, it might be who must to be looking at what the possibilities are. As far as the collaborative, they are looking at alternate proposals that they might present that would help to solve the issues that have been identified. But I'm not sure based on the fact that the, who is it that?
JD.
Well, the, not a name, but the title, what is he called, Commissioner? Or whatever. I mean, the powers that be seemed first to be focused on numbers of students and cost effectiveness and they've now moved to this whole concept of.
Capacity.
Capacity in the district. And their point being that smaller districts don't have the ability to have the larger central office staff that's required. That they had a meeting in Boston and nobody showed up because none of the superintendents can get away from their districts to go. So, they're, they've interpreted that to mean that everybody's overworked. And the question is, why are we paying so much money to all of these people? So, it does in some ways come back to money, but it's also, they've disguised it as what they call capacity issue, so.
I'm going to be a little bit devil's advocate though. I think it's important for us all to have this discussion. We don't have enough central office capacity. We don't have a regular person. We don't have the things that we need. It's important for us to have a discussion about can we, if we partner with our neighbors can we more effectively deliver services? That's the question.
I think that, I think we should be having that discussion. I think this, but what we need to do is say, what do we think would work best for us? Should it be a voluntary regionalization of some districts in a geographic area that makes sense to us that we think we can provide, within which we can provide transportation for students that won't involve an hour and a half outside? Or are there alternate proposals that we can make that increase our capacity while leaving the districts intact the way they are? Or is there something else that someone hasn't thought of? But we need to be having those discussions before this, before it's forced on us to regionalize in a way that we don't.
That, that's the key because if it's mandated, they're, what my understanding is, they're moving quickly. And when it becomes, what my understanding, I will find out more information. Unfortunately, I was out of the loop for a couple of weeks. But my understanding is how it's shifted is, is that now when it becomes mandated, that they're going to mandate such things as they're frowning upon unions of, meaning school committee unions where that they're, they're going to want one school committee. So, if we combine with one, with another district, we can't have a school committee in this district and a school committee in another district that they're going to require a collapsed, a collapsed school committee.
They want a regional model, not a superintendent union model.
Exactly, not a superintendent.
And a lot of people who've been superintendents in unions will tell you they don't want to vote a five school committees a month. So, they're, you know, there's capacity issues.
Exactly, exactly. And so, that might be difficult for, but that might be difficult for school committees, existing school committees. So, those are the things that need to be understood.
It will be difficult for existing school committees and it will be difficult for some parents and it will be difficult for communities who feel like they're losing local control.
That's right.
I'm not from Massachusetts, but I can tell you one of the first things that I heard when I came here and that I've heard it over and over in the 27 years I've been here is that Massachusetts was the home of public education. We know what we're doing. We invented it. We're going to, and local control seems to be a huge component in that. So, I think what we need to do is inform our community and then use what local involvement and control that we have to assess what our options are and what we think would work best for us so that we can lobby for on our own behalf to do what it is that we want rather than having something forced on us that may not be what we want.
Most, many of our neighbors are in regions. There's really only a few districts that are not in regions. So, is it useful for us as a city and as a school district to invite our neighbors who are on in regions together to meet with us, to have a conversation about what we think is possible, if any? Is that a useful thing to do?
That's right. Maybe.
I asked the question last night, what, what the next steps should be, but it seems that information is an important thing. And so, I believe that HECC is going to be working on some kind of a one or two-page, you know, document of facts about what's happening. I think that looking at what kinds of models might work to solve the issues is another thing. But I also think it would be important to inform parents. I think certainly that meeting with districts around us that are not already regionalized makes perfect sense.
As a practical matter, Hampshire County, I think there's only four districts.
Four cities. I don't know where, Belchertown and South Hadley and all those are.
Okay, certainly South Hadley. But a U, Core County here is four districts. East Adams, Hadley, Hatfield, and North Hampton, right? Is there any else? Is yours, your South Hampton's in the region?
Yeah, South Hampton's part of Hampshire Regional. Amherst is sort of similar, but they're not.
They're, they're regionalized, both in elementary and secondary, it's just way different. If Amherst fell.
They're, they're.
Secondary. She's very strange in county.
I mean, Franklin County has no collaborative. There may be issues going on with them if there's, there can be a collaborative answer to something.
They're not, the states not looking at collaborative, they really, they are, they're.
They're looking at regionalization. I'm saying we need to be offering them an alternative that might work to solve whatever questions they have.
I think we have to understand what will work for us, including alternatives.
Right, yes.
But Franklin County has a grant from the state, so look at collaboration, including regionalization, including all its schools in the county working together. So, they're looking at some pretty dramatic changes that are not being, going down easy. But we're all.
There are funds available now.
To have those conversations, right.
That's right.
Well, and then the other component, the other thing I think is important is that this is being pushed very quickly, as Azabolina said, by the commissioner and the board and the department. But it's also got huge buy-in on the part of legislature.
But it does.
And so, you know, while I'm not sure that we're prepared to contact our legislators and say, we don't want you to do this, I think that it might be within our realm to contact them and say, this is going very quickly. Could you give us more time to look at doing it ourselves? Because I think that this is going to happen before parents even know it's happening.
It is, but you know, the state is, my understanding is the way it's going to happen is that the state will come out, they'll pass the legislature, legislation. Next year, the state will come out and evaluate the districts to determine whether or not districts have the capacity. If they do not have the capacity, they're going, then it's going to then require districts to enter into some kind of consolidation and to have that done in the following year. Or at least that's the kind of legislation that they're intending on entering in, in the spring. If we're, if we as a district.
Aren't they waiting for the Regis Budgeting Committee, the reports to come out?
Right. I mean, that's, I mean, that's going to come out. We have one more meeting in November. We're in the middle of talking about a lot of these issues. I, I don't have the sense, and I, this is, I can't disclose really anything we're discussing, but I don't have the sense that it's.
Don't turn the camera on.
That it's, but that it's that fast, that it's happening that quickly. There's, because the debate that's going on with us is, we're still back a ways and really, you know, kind of going through a bunch of different.
Then we're being told, we're being told different.
You know, I think, I think it's a scary proposition in general, just of what's happening with education in the state. And it's easy for things to kind of trickle out and panic kind of ensues. And I think what we have is, you know, there's a lot going on at the Finance Commission level and, and really that recommendation's going to then fuel what the governor files for legislation and then, so I don't know if we're at that stage yet.
Okay, well, and as I said, next week, I'm sure I'll hear differently because, you know, or you're more accurate, I'm hoping, more accurate in information.
As soon as you get information, I think it would be really important for us to have a, well, I'm not, it's not a blame finger accusation thing. I just think that the information is still coming out and it changes, you know, pretty quickly. So, I would say that we need to get information out as quick as we can. But I mean, I think the other thing that concerns me is, is what she said, that they will pass the legislation first and then develop the criteria on which they're going to evaluate districts. So, we don't even know how we're going to be doing.
You mentioned talking to our own legislature. Stan Rosenberg has been a strong opponent of the consolidation in Franklin County. So, and they are looking at budget year next year where there's pretty much no growth on the state level. So, I mean, I think there's, I think the hard thing that the Finance Commissioner, anybody's going to have to deal with is the fact that the state is investing less money as a percentage of the total cost, but wants to tell us how to do it. So, the collision is going to be between the 60% investors who are the cities and towns and the 40% going down investors, which is state government, right? And so, they're going to take their 40 or, or less than 40 next year and leverage it and say, if you want our money, these are the things you're going to have to do. So, I wonder what the feds do. That's going to be the debate, right? And we're the 60% investors and we're going to all say, hey, we want local control. We're the majority investor. So, that's where we're going to. And I guess I prefer that we don't get into that kind of fight, instead saying, what's the best way for us to afford the best education for kids, forgetting about it, you know, shedding all the preconceived notions about models that we've had before. What works in terms of an administrative structure and a direct delivery classroom structure for kids?
I mean, they, and they're looking at a variety of different things from across the country, including county stuff. I mean, we just, our county thing just like went away a few years back.
But, you know, Franklin County, yes, doesn't have a collaborative, but has a fabulous model of how to deliver regional services on the municipal side, right? So, there are some good models out there on how to do some collaborative service delivery. We just need to be, we need, I guess, let's go in with an open mind and let's see what works best for, for us, knowing that, I mean, one thing that, I'd love it if we could figure out a way to play better with our neighbors. So, instead of having school choice, we're dealing in a better way with, if we had a larger playing field, do kids get some choice intra-district that is not taking money out of anybody's pocket? Are there ways to do that? That would be great, you know? I'd much prefer that.
Well, I guess then my request is, we, can we ask our legislators to, what he said is reassuring.
Yeah.
But I heard what she said, which was that this is moving very quickly. So, can, is there a way to ask the legislators to slow down just a little bit so that we have time to have the conversations locally?
Maybe some of us should try to meet with Peter and Stan and then come back to our next meeting.
Well, I mean, we had, we did, we used to have a legislative liaison that was authorized to write letters on behalf, but there you go.
But I don't, I don't think it's a question of writing letters. I think this is a conversation. Is it useful for budget property, for instance, to say, to ask Peter and Stan if they would be willing to meet with the budget property committee? We're thinking about what we're doing. You know, we're in the middle of the strategic planning process. We need to have this kind of intention of, we're thinking, is it worth having, trying to have that conversation with our legislators? And I don't think it's a letter. I mean, I think there's a place for letters, but I think this is a conversation. If I was them, I wouldn't commit anything to write.
I don't think.
Yeah, we need to figure out how to have the conversation. So, maybe we need to think about it.
Well, the other thing, not to belabor this discussion, but the other thing we heard was that most of the legislators are avoiding any kind of meetings that, boy, this is a topic because they don't want to have to talk about it. So, getting their ears is going to be a challenge.
Well, Stan, when Stan's thing, it's done till March.
Hazel.
Well, we need some information earlier. Okay, shall we, we'll continue and try to get information?
I was actually going to ask the question. I was assuming that the Strategic Planning Committee has not discussed this at all. I was wondering what, if they are, you know, what they are discussing, how this would impact on the, when are we actually going to hear from them? Is it next month?
Next month, yeah. Next month. And they have just, the committee's just now broken up into some subgroups to work on some ideas that are out there. But I do think we need to have some information about this for them. And I'm not, I feel like they're in a process, so I don't really want to go into everything that the committee's doing, but they do need to get more information on this issue.
What actually is, are they coming to us with one final proposal?
First, in the process of sorting that.
We don't know that yet.
Yeah. Final product is yet to be exactly figured out.
Delivery, the delivery process for the final product.
Thank you. Through the second, all in favor?
Aye.